May I request that I was married for listening?
Here.
How the person, Manuel, I'm sorry, Manuel, what is it? How the person, Patricia, Trish, Garcia?
Here.
How the person, Yorayao?
Here.
How the person, I don't know who I see here? Mayor, is that me?
Here. It appears that I don't have any citizens to be heard for number four. I think if I'm on, I am twenty and I am twenty-one. To give us like when we set the agreement, permit, sir.
I hear someone citizen.
For twenty and twenty-one, does anyone have a citizen's comment?
Yes. I believe I'm on the low, all the way. Okay, there's a.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the best and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Wonderful, what citizens here, I have a lot of people speaking, I'm sure that you have your name.
Mayor, I want to address three things. One was working through the last meeting where you asked me, Mayor, writing an account, showing where the light came to be addressed in certain areas of this town. Your council, you should be aware of all these issues that need to be addressed. You should take the time on your day and night to go around and check on some of the others that any of the other councils do. Do not be one to ask me to meet as a citizen, but you're not in the form of your competence. And that's in my opinion, but that's what I feel. The other thing I want to bring out is apparently I'm not a congressman and some of y'all have talked about. Going to the community, going to the constitution, yes, you are exempt from or being taught, but going to them, you're not. So if you're going to that and you have more than three, which is the majority, they're probably the law. Be aware of that on your side of the caucus, having to try to save a month. The other thing is, I'm lucky that y'all signed up for the campaign because back in twenty twenty, when all this was under COVID, it was something that came unnecessary to get income or whatever you do differently. But as they progress, nobody took the time to follow up. And they're doing their last duty, following on different things that need to be addressed on the other end. That means I do wish I had a thing to do and I do wish I could be very strict and I hope that maybe next year y'all can do whatever y'all want.
Next, let's see if you can hear it, if you can hear someone.
I have a couple issues, uh, mine is subject to the council or some of that. It looks like this much, uh, the district is scared of the looking at the money, but supposedly I would prepare. Not already, it's still investigated, I don't need any more expertise, as well as the fact that this has enhanced the program. We discussed it, I don't know if it's better, I don't think it enhances something. Uh, so our proposal is to put it on the agenda so you can gather another one and when you can do it, it's a lot of gear, you gotta do it, a plan, when you can do it. Give me nothing, any kind of information or hope that it's gonna be still, I think it's embarrassing. Because they have to hear it certainly to get an answer, but nobody is willing to make that decision. At least about nine, uh, this started with the arena and then he was hired, everything was done, he was ready, uh, the DM crew, Mr. Vlada left and dropped the ball. So up here again, please put it on the agenda, maybe the council doesn't know the story, doesn't have the information, such as the pen and suppose the pen and other guys. If, uh, people are saying that you're the one that is holding everything up, uh, but give us some thought. The other one that really is a option that's wrong and would say, everybody knows, uh, how this is working, but just a thought, three or four, uh, designations go on place on that that parts have been. Nobody wants to take anything that goes into it, but we're prepared to wait and it is really fine because all of us are involved, all of us know, but nobody will predict and anticipate and also the ability not to lose the funds. Now, maybe, maybe it's because everybody is picking and then, uh, most of the ones that are, and basically because the people saw the effects very clearly that everybody got hired on the purpose of the arena. Show the very honestly, you know, the end of this life, obviously.
Moving on to reply, we have a little case, uh, do you have any discussion on it?
There. Um, is any way that speakers can be a little bit louder and harder?
We can't hear anything, there's a reply to you. So yeah, to be honest, I replied with any, any comments or anything to approve the net or forward or claim that point of delivery. I mean, we just need to be, uh, do I second? All in favor? All opposed? Number six. This is the discussion consideration act on receiving the published change that was approved on March twentieth of twenty fourteen and possibly accepting the donation for purchase of a pilot sign and visualization, uh, by the reason of the signing, it's not past twenty, uh, did you see the next?
Yes, I can just speak out loud.
We typically do a decent, I haven't seen it very many times. The council approved it and let me feel and then said to whoever it's assigned probably.
In fact, I did be sure that you had seen the discrepancies that I was trying to ask you to see.
Yeah, I've been actually seen that. I just did the yellow one that they so. Right now, we definitely started.
Is this not an improvement for the water?
Yeah, this is a clean water fund. It's wastewater. We currently have a three and a half minute drill project in here. An old shell ready to go. Also discussed, uh, this station at M four sixty-eight. We got two of those stations going into it. Each one is rated at eight hundred fifty gallons a minute, which is one by McDonald's and the second is further out at M four sixty-eight. So the one that we're looking at actually fully rebuild it, the pumps at that station are rated at two hundred fifty gallons a minute. Does this make sense to have two eight hundred fifty gallon pumps going into one that's two hundred fifty? Um, as we grow, that's when we come to an issue.
Well, you got two pumps for sixty-eight.
Yes, we do. There's one, uh, yeah, there's one further out. There's one to the vault, to the vault center.
Yes, and then across the street for.
Across the street further out. Um, we've also asked about wastewater plant improvements, uh, as far as electrical. And we're doing everything electrical at the wastewater plant, uh, putting the wastewater plant and the station on a SC system, how our water system is, so that it's able to be controlled and run more efficiently than it is for. Um, there's also some clay sewer lines throughout the city throughout the system that need to be replaced. They're forty, fifty years old and they're no good. So those are some of the things that we're looking to do with that.
I know that we have much about twenty-five rather from, from the two of that, and we were having issues with, uh, uh, I guess certain items, but.
Yes.
To, to the line and, and it will mess up the whole.
Yeah, so that's correct. So part of the plan that's already engineered to the frequent pipeline and all project is actually put in a half a water screen at a maintenance station at, at the wastewater plant. Uh, also dry beds and an addition of five dry beds at the wastewater plant and there's one there fifteen at the wastewater plant that's been down for several years that needs to be totally demolished.
So the water screens we have.
McKenna water screens, we currently have two after, after the maintenance station. So we give all the trash, all the free workings out of this station and we have three pumps in there that each are not twenty thousand dollars a piece that have gone down multiple times because there's nothing to track back. So the water screens are on top of the, the irrigation basins and it's after that system. And those, those will generally actually install on twenty-four.
So those are the really bad seats?
Um, those will stay in place and be, be active. There's a, at that, at the maintenance station right behind it, there's an old maintenance station used to be there. We could consider a wet well at this point. Um, we found that a short-term storage area for pumps supposed to go down and hold water. That the half of our screen is going to go down inside that maintenance station and it's going to look a course through the push of the trash out, out of it and into a dumpster. Uh, which will save the pumps and help save the plant if we have more, uh, open wells moving trash.
And just, just, just one other thing I was gonna say, uh, another chance for a well deserved pat on the back. If you could explain how these pumps work and the predictable part of it and all of that.
So, yes, so, uh, associate economic survey, uh, we completed associate economic survey about a year ago. Uh, the census had a city with a median income of fifty-five thousand dollars or awful. Um, when, when this, when we were set at that rate, um, and put us out of running for grants. So the city came in and he recommended council do a associate economic survey. The people who were, the people did this survey. It had to be an independent company. The city couldn't do it. When they did the survey, they did representation of all the, all the people that live here in, you know. And they went door to door and they asked them the question, how much do you make and how many people live here, what's the population, you know, try to figure population and all that. Um, when they did it, the associate economic survey came back to thirty-six thousand dollars median income from the city. After that, it approved by the city council, uh, before this, Texas Water Bell Door, they may approve to use that survey versus the census. When they did that, it gave the city ability to get seventy percent grant from Texas Water Bell Door. Um, right at that point, I said, I said, if we're able to get seventy percent, the city at this point, because we've never gotten that. We're at the last, the last business we got was a million dollars, one twenty million. You know, I said, let's try to do as much as we can and maybe we'll, we'll get twenty million dollars off. And then we, we got a grant on fourteen, right? Um, issues with our water rates being very low, we, we corrected that. We got ourselves a line that actually did a grant. Um, and that's what we're doing now. The current rate is twelve point three million dollars for clean water. Um, we're still looking at the drinking water. We did not, we did not qualify for drinking water this year. Uh, next year we would probably do it and be more likely to fall.
So seventy percent of that is from here?
Seventy percent of it.
So our city budget is four million?
Yeah, about four, four million.
So you've got about thirty times what the city budget is.
Yes, correct.
And seventy percent of that is from here. I think that's really something people need to understand.
So we're eligible for the drinking water fund. Uh, the city is looking to build a, another water well. Uh, we are looking to build our square tank for a new fire station owned by the Forest Complex. We have a water well there that has a direct reject system. Uh, there is some floors there. Something is very much needed. Uh, the water well also is very much needed. We, we are, we are retaining the well we have, that we have for what we have today. Water levels continue to decrease and the, and the population continues to grow. We're, we're gonna have to do something. Um, a city, a city that says it does nothing, you know, we're poised for growth. The track is crazy, we're not even certified. Everything collateral is coming this way. If the city wants to grow, the key is to have the water. You have the infrastructure, you have the water. The city doesn't want growth and we don't want to, and they have it. The positives of growth is that it bring in more revenue, it bring in more sales tax, which allows the city to do more for having services for the community.
All right, that, uh, we'll go ahead and use, uh, Mr. Ryan, you still want to make a motion to go ahead and comment? On my second, on paper, approving the engagement letter, you said twenty-one, yeah, aye, all votes?
Thank you very much.
We feel, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be around and I know that, uh, everything's already rolling through, through fast, uh, so hopefully we'll, uh, we'll splurge and we come in and do it soon.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to number nine. This is, uh, discussion and consideration act on approving the financial advisory services agreement from the A A N financial consultant for financial advisor, uh, financial services for Texas water development board project number one five six six zero.
So, well, it should go along with the same thing for the second, our, uh, two that is in, uh, Texas water development board requires us to have financial advisors. Uh, Robert, take it in on, is the financial advisor, he's not able to give us tonight, but he does have, uh, Thomas, have you announced any certain, what's Trapp? What's Trapp, yes, sir?
Would you like to know what the rest of the panel?
Yes. Uh, the evening, yes, Thomas was Trapp, uh, director of tier rated financial consulting, uh, Sumo Kwan, uh, Robert worked in this area. And here for the, uh, long standing association with the city. Uh, Juan and I actually, uh, earlier, so I'm part of the city, we're all meeting at similar water development or financing concern with this team. Together as part of the experience, particularly in this area, working with cities to secure financing for the water development board. Uh, the quarterly, uh, throughout this process, the water development board has many deadlines and requirements that you can get before you can secure the financing, a big part of that before we will complete as a financial advisor with the assistance and recommendations from the city staff. Uh, right now, we could be helping the application, running the numbers and stuff like that. So, uh, as that process continues, we'll either be here to present updates, we'll certainly be here, uh, after the pricing concerns of the water development board sets of interest rates to present the results of that to y'all, and you can answer, frankly, I can answer, or Robert will answer, any questions you have about, uh, interest rates for payment or interest costs, things of that nature. But, uh, the water development board is great, the rates they offer, but if you have, uh, some kind of cumbersome process, it's always good to have a team that, that chills all together. We certainly, we can afford to grow and secure a great project and, uh, successful financing.
The thing right now that, that I'm getting confused with is we get some water development, I believe, that two percent.
You have some of that same, the latest one was between twenty-one. And that was actually a big screw up. But yes, yes, they do all, the, for our preliminary numbers, we use it through the year, we can determine the rate for three quarters.
Do you want to change your office?
Yes.
Thank you. So the senator recommended approval of, uh, this, 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 uh, nonsense.
So you could, uh, give me that.
No, he didn't give it to me before. He just didn't give it to me in a little text. He said that he was, uh, signed, uh, for the, for the.
Are you? Yes, he did say, signed, he did say, he, he had it in his contract.
Is that a, is that a good factor or a justice degree on the court?
So those places that, that, uh, for our preliminary numbers, we use that as a fixed rate. We will know what the final interest rate is. Uh, the city of Pierce Hall, I mentioned they did a, a slide interest scale, so that earlier, it's already, overpayment scale, overpayment had a lower interest rate. Uh, I believe they're going to rate it, start at three percent, so about two point nine seven percent.
Is it a little?
Yes, so the water development board, they, they updated the ratio they offered within a year. So for the city of Pierce Hall, I'm going from one point zero five to three point one three for a total of one rate of two point nine two seven. So particularly in this interest rate environment, a very, uh, a very low interest rate, especially in.
Was it, was it, uh, six million, like, third quality?
Yeah, six point four million.
Six point, they, they have, uh, twenty percent?
Eighty, eighty percent.
So seven for.
I don't believe it was seventy-three.
Yeah, and then that's fine. So, so to clarify, and that's, um, something we're revealing at the same time. Basically, Pierce Hall qualified for a seventy thirty. T W D B did not have enough principal forgiveness funds and gave them the entire amount, seventy percent forgiveness, so they kept receiving a million for small systems. Now, the other thing they were doing last year, this is actually for Solstice from last year, is that they wouldn't stack principal forgiveness. They changed that for this year and now it is stackable. So the application that we're submitting, again, the city qualified for seventy thirty, we will give back once they value the application, make sure they have enough funds to give you the full seventy thirty. Before anything moves out of that, you of course would have the decision if it wasn't full seventy thirty, to take a look at it again or not comply with the holdout. But right now, we're going forward as if we're making it for seventy thirty. We have a motion to, uh, approve, no more questions. Second, second. All favor?
Aye.
Number nine passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the board champion. Discussion consideration act on approving the following Texas water development board document for the city to pursue the project. One five, high delivery plan for the design and construction of wastewater treatment type improvements.
Well, this is, uh, this Stacy Barnes with C D Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, councilwoman, and Stacey Barnes, Senator Smith. We've already talked about this quite a bit, but this is for, uh, we're asking to approve the resolution and call their documents and put it in the bill of application for this water development board funds, which will wire us a R A. Um, the, what we're applying for is about twelve point one million. The resolution's for other thirteen, just in case it's not too exciting, of course. And then the expectation really is that it's going to be seventy thirty, so the one itself will be substantially less than that. Uh, so the application we have submitted, uh, should appear in the next few weeks. We'll start to review it. We'll answer questions for them. And then normally we'll move forward for commitment with this Texas water development board within about three months. Usually it's about three months to go through their process. And then after that, it normally takes about another three months for the body members on that day to actually have a level of closing. Uh, as Mr. Roy mentioned earlier, part of this project was already started a few years ago as far as the planning and design elements of the three areas of the wastewater plant. Um, one of those areas, I know I was here just a few months ago, we talked about the, um, the screening portion of the port. We have some funding already for that coming from the last one. So this would be for the other parts and then, uh, the other aspects that, that Mr. Roy was talking about, so. Um, it is really exciting. A lot of this is like, that's an infrastructure law funding, that was a lot of that seventy percent grant. Uh, in this case, it's a fantastic time for the city to be able to, um, to move forward with some grant funding in the projects. Have any questions? Any questions?
Oh, 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 no, this is a true, uh, do, um, from the E W A. Is it going to be strictly just for, for, uh, sewer and line and, you know, the old existing lines that we don't be placing on?
It, it's strictly, uh, sewer. This, this portion is strictly for. So there's a lot of focus on wastewater plants and there'll be a focus on the infrastructure of the community.
For the drinking water, I just want to mention that you brought it up earlier. So what T W D B does is they do an initial round of invitations and then if people either don't come in for those funds, um, or they don't utilize all the funds, they will do a second round. So there is still a chance at some point later in the year that the city could be invited for the drinking water side. They just weren't in the initial round, um, for the drinking water, the workloads.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion to, uh, no, no. Motion, yes, this is a second. On paper, for, for seeing and moving forward with, uh, ten days to be, and see, yeah, aye, all votes? Motion passes. Moving on to number eleven. Discussion and consideration of the city, uh, of the Tula holiday schedule for the year twenty twenty-five. Uh, last time on, we came a little bit, uh, we had discussed, uh, maybe a lot of finding a little bit. I don't know if there's any recommendations for modifications that were on the schedule, considering that the land is a special one.
I would like to say something, but I, I do agree that, uh, we should see those federal holidays, but then Thursday should be taken off during, uh, June eighth day or Wednesday for New Year's Eve. You want to take off two guilty, and, and. Is that technically the day that we, that mom, is that one of the things, um, December thirty first?
You just say it out.
The Thursday, Tuesday, uh, for New Year's Eve. To take off Wednesday, the seventh thirty first for New Year's Eve and then Thursday, fourth, New Year's, the New Year's holiday, I can see the New Year's holiday, maybe see, I think, I, I. So, uh, those are, uh, I know the national holidays, you know, those are not national holidays, whereas the South, uh, kind of fair, Easter Monday and, uh, uh, good Friday. Uh, everything else is incredible. If they don't know about saving up the time, it's, it's, that would be just more for the New Year's people. Anything better, or anything we have to take off, right, we, we can pretty much.
Well, that's our first follow, uh, New Year's, uh, Eve, but, and then New Year's Day on the first.
Yeah, right.
I think there's a several for no more, they can be, uh, uh, not for the boys to pick off. New Year's Day and New Year's Eve, who personally know. Like, where it's safe, like it is.
I, I agree with, uh, New Year's Day and I, I wouldn't, uh, New Year's Eve, I think, would be, would be allowing employees to do it being, uh, like a skeleton. And, um, some, I don't know, few employees that have no need for whatever they want to keep off, I wouldn't see anything better about that. And then, um, this Thanksgiving, we get the, the, the Thursday, Friday, because that Friday has a preview, we're gonna leave that. And then the other thing was, uh, good Friday and Easter Monday, uh, I think one or the other, I, I mean, um, I'd have to, I'd celebrate both, but, you know, and, and that's, that's something you've always done here in the city, and, and I hope that we should get both. Okay, we've got.
I, I, I would be, you know, you know.
I, I'm, I'm with the Easter Monday and I'll tell you why, because I know a lot of people travel, uh, out of town. And, uh, that would, uh, give them time to get ready for Tuesdays, go back to school and everything else.
But, because I don't know, you know, how you would see it, change this, but I don't think you could do that.
So we're looking to, to, um, skeleton through on, um, the second thirty first, right?
Uh, New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, correct, okay. And, um, June eighth is national, I say it should stay, and I know that March seventh is, uh, the fair and normally it's the, because it's good down here in the, so I'll give that to. Any other changes? Any other discussions? True motion to vote on these, those holidays, that would be, uh, so I'll see if we want, uh, is, New Year's Eve, the, June, uh, June eighth day, I would say, I'd say that.
Uh, have you?
So the only modification I have is a skeleton through on, on the thirty first. I agree that we should celebrate June eighth as well. Uh, so you may have a motion to this. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All votes? Moving on to number. So this is, uh, discussion and consideration of improvement for universal, requesting the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to T R P S for, uh, participation in the city's facade improvement program. Um, you have, uh, you have documents, you have a list of what they spent and everything else for the facade. You have any discussion? Just a little motion to, to approve, okay. All favor, I do have a second, I thought.
Sir.
All favor?
Aye.
All votes? The amount of, uh, approved is fifteen thousand dollars to your face. Moving on to number thirteen. This is a, uh, request for the South County Sheriff Anthony for two changes to wait for Fiat, the facade, or he done, or the annual Bus Angeles event. That was also impacted, you have any review? Any discussion?
Were you here, Steve, about, yes, sir, uh, come on up, sir.
Sir, sorry, just a question. Just requesting to, please, to use a property of the annual, we send them, is, uh, requesting that we're presenting.
Any questions for the board?
Do we know who's charged for our thesis? I don't understand that.
I don't believe you can have a charge, we just, you know. Those are every part. Good morning, everybody. Never before.
Say the name of the person, I, 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 I wish for the best, uh, this, uh, I'm happy to. Do I say it? All favor? All votes? Thank you. Oh, sorry, aye. Which has been here since we were.
All right, number fourteen is a discussion and consideration matter on request by, which would be that, uh, we have a class of twenty twenty-six. For the use of outside intervention center for their annual high school pump on April twenty-sixth or twenty twenty-five. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I'm still a little, uh, confused about opportunities and best for the neighbors. Uh, and I'm reprieved the way we work with all of our entities, however we are business and just like their businesses, they have to do the same. So, we're asking to pay the situation, we're asking for a loan and we're asking for two days, and it was ever everything we have to pay. And it's not me, it's a taxpayer's dollars that I have to pay for these years. So I think that it's a kind of solution, maybe using a company, some kind of solution that, uh, you know, very good for charging for maybe several entities. And, uh, I, I have the best support, so if we had to get more of these people, especially in the past, to ask for the vision, we would, uh, order it. So it's that kind of special for the twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so, so in this letter here by the legislature, um, they do acknowledge that they may have to pay and they are looking for a discounted rate. Um, we do not have established a discounted rate for any entity, um, so council will have to come up with a rating and do that.
So who needs the pump?
Yeah.
And who needs the, the, the? I, I kind of do like, like we should, the pump, um, the reason being is that there is kind of a places like ours that are good for students. Can be along the streets and, and be a little more, uh, I think if we do the same center myself, it's, it's a little more, uh, secure, you know, where the kids are. I know there's one of these, I know it's a community event, you know, for the kids. And the rent is actually in there, you know, we go into other facilities, really, uh, if they're looking for that type of station, they're really looking house. Their high school is just far, you know, away. I'm sure that once they, they do some of that, working, get their all the time that they're going, it might be one more size, but it might be that.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, I don't, I want to, I want to, you, you, or this, uh, uh, this is a fact that two persons who, you have a lot of, they were, they were, and other, yes, you know, so. And I think that probably they take care of the situation of the children, you know, and then, like, it is original, they eat, they, uh, uh, uh. Uh, I understand that there's, uh, none, knowing, kind of eating, that, uh, that, uh, part of the, of the person, I, 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 I don't know.
And I, I can't say that the school, you know, the, you know, a bunch of kind of pass away and I haven't seen the individuals or anything from that, you know, uh, for sending out all our taxes, uh, on a bigger day than theirs. So they, they have to do something back as well.
I know that they, that's because the school has looked as long as it will, put back a, 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 a.
Well, I certainly believe that the uh the veterans have to use it because your community has to kind of use it especially for our kids that are in a disaster and however it's not that it's free you know like I said we are business and and our citizens come and tell us to be careful how we use that's their funds is exactly what we need to do and I'm not asking that we pay but if I wanted to have a wedding there necessarily we have a really big charge which we can't hold all I'm asking is some of these entities do have money it isn't like a dog if they want to have something to do a fundraiser for uh people they think it's fine but you know to come and celebrate I'm all for it but they need to they need to use it downstairs so you learn something else where the entities must pay something. Where is it? Do I have motion to vote please to vote?
I would like to uh you know uh with all the fun probably you know approach of me.
I think that the 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 higher school is wrong so if you want to have a larger agreement which we do have one we're waiting on uh that I expect and asking about whether you significantly the same thing in the school as well as in the other and also typically to use the test is a good question. So tonight we can all say this or no?
So we'll take it to vote? All in favor of allowing me uh uh motion sorry aye, one motion? Do I have a second motion? Do I have a favor of allowing me the twenty twenty sixth class to use the civic center for the prom? Say aye, all opposed? Aye. Motion back. And then number fifteen please go back to the same topic. Do you have a motion to the discussion consideration to uh to do I just in a minute to school district to make fees for using our ten dollars for the first annual Christmas dinner and gathering? And that dates before the uh December fourteenth twenty twenty four for uh during uh gathering I think. Do you have a motion to vote? I have a second. Do I have a second motion to vote on the uh school? Super happy. So have a motion and one second.
Aye.
Motion back. Number sixteen discussion consideration by I have come on folks who may apply American E A P to buy up this new street to Old Street as requested by Mr. Lewis of Kansas. Do you have a motion to vote?
Yes, ma'am. So guys, here um here again as you all have seen the light of uh the same week around Old Street and I don't know if you all have pictures of where um those persons uh this uh this is here um I don't know if you want to answer any questions I just some pictures also uh as I'm asking maybe there are those that we have on the next one. Those are the individuals that sometimes roam around throughout the creek and it's kind of dark and early this morning uh they were going across the creek with a flashlight on the phone and it's taking and happening there so also another thing that Old Street was considered is considered a gorgeous property due ninety seven to shut down the old U U incidentally they found a new seat while the city was in the middle of the world.
But um sixteen we have a uh the vote is for an amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty one if you can sense that we can't amount three ninety four ninety so say that was seventeen twenty eight.
If he's in the side it's installed for the show on the park. I would give seventeen.
And that property was safe property, right? So, okay.
This person plus it.
Yes, sir, sorry, there's some pushes.
And this kind of coincide different under seventeen which we'll talk about in a little bit but uh I do reminder myself at night time and it it is pretty dark I'm always concerned with that area of all of all of us in Creek one yes we don't flood all the time but what we do is a safety and hazard uh not only for citizens and for people we flood in there uh because people were retrieved out of there when when we did flood uh but for us for uh employees uh they have a responsible center for barricades and and things like that and those floods are pretty dark.
I see that with you there.
Right, I don't understand why people are walking in the creek typically we have sidewalks and there's streets and they're walking it's not I I did go through those.
Yeah, it's a toll basis for those pedestrians they go through there that's why they're off to their sort of making up to the store or something like that.
The other the other reason that probably there's a criminal element too so it's another issue here and hel- helpful to our office um they're able to see some of that area that they might avoid not they they hide in there a lot and uh there's a lot of uh theft right now in our town they use that as well so it's not just uh just just if people want to walk through the flashlight there is criminal element in that uh also.
Maybe we can put aside of saying we want to clarify.
I think that the light would would be very very.
I agree.
Then there I mean yes. I uh don't know where the other council stands on this I simply need to say that uh because we're not a lot of councils I don't know how everyone thinks on the situation but we came to this last month I did ask you to perhaps go with this and you never reached out so good myself and I did look in the area and uh Mr. Sarkovich's house is right there by the creek where the slide is being estimated here going down the water piece of the river where you live that was centered in the day so I lived there at night and I surprise that street is totally lit there's like five or six street lights there it is dark by the creek but to spend two thousand one hundred and twenty three dollars and five cents to get this light plus you guys are asking for a whole lot of lights I've been around the neighborhood here are neighborhoods for homes that lived is that needs to be but they don't have so I don't understand where we need to spend this kind of money because the one time charge I just told them but then the activity cost for all the other poles over the winter uh to light the creek. Uh my get after.
Yes.
That's a question um how many light areas uh saying that we need here?
All right, he took this one and then last one to say that he wanted three more.
Uh she's saying that's one for the territory of that um Pega Street and Martina Street that's totally different compared to like number seventeen I'm only talking about one light that is needed there is one light that right now across my street where I live is giving the lighting the whole street towards my house there is a link a lot between the creek well the creek and the lake I mean about that's what I thought about on security purposes for the kids they go to school early in the morning by third is that's the way that's why I'm questioning this light not for myself I don't I don't live in a public lot I live in my house.
Right, right, it's by the way too.
Correct.
And the creek is dark and the streets are so lit the kids shouldn't have to run the creek.
You're not talking about the streets you're talking about the creek.
Yeah, we can't avoid that because they're they're doing that but they won't help out the law enforcement by lighting up the criminals that do pass through there at night that's unsafe but that's your decision and that's up to you.
Well, my 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 alley where I live is extremely dark and I thought I was pretty like on top of my house the lights up that's all it is so.
But the creek is not yours.
Doesn't make to light up that creek and it's not gonna be in the city at all and my my recommendation is that we we both can do it and and I think that this is a little bit back to the citizens of the community we have to start somewhere and that's not saying that that's the only place we're gonna do it uh the creek has been a hobby for a while and we do have uh we do have uh uh things that we 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 can and we shouldn't wait till something bad happens to actually occur, sir.
There's several streets there there was a uh killed in the street that people at nine o'clock uh they need night in especially where the creek they would have a uh that they would run that well that uh I don't know if it's a bell it's a telephone or some people won't see that that you know bridge and you have a a very sensitive or cars that run down even through that creek but uh I agree with the creek's rules to do that is that you know.
Anyway, we have one more uh citizen that we would like to comment on on number.
I have another question who asked for this vote from A D P who requested this this call two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
So city did.
Who requested?
Yeah, we have a request from the request from the city asking for light service uh who recognized that there was a hole there and the engineer would need he does A D P so we found that A D P.
And there was no other light there it's got a hole on the other place is that we pick a poster over here.
So so the city has to counter at the A D P if there's a hole personally in place the light will be installed for free um the only thing the city has left to pay is the monthly bill on the light.
Yeah, I have a picture.
Uh one exact um in the past I guess a year two years ago there was a project that was supposed to have happened on my second creek it should contribute to walkway for the district.
Yeah, so we we applied for funds to feed them I think with twenty million dollars twenty million dollars for support uh we were not able to work.
Yeah, but the the one of things that were supposed to be lighting in case that project to be booked on that walkway is correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I would say that's one of the things that while uh the lights are really everywhere across town but to start off uh I mean western because the full street is is very dangerous and it's emergency about poor school also for the kids that's why I agree.
And there is a lot of uh lane traffic there through the lane as well and and um you can not just walk you drive the cars and all all sorts of things so uh it is pretty dark in the morning uh and night time especially at night time. I'm surprised I I been through there the criminal elements because uh most you know there was power on the person and it was dangerous running through there and maybe running and and during and and pursuit uh you know so that would really have been helpful back in that day. I'm surprised the best of the kids are watching the school.
Yes, it does.
Yes. Everybody has hearts.
And this fortune is.
Everybody is. Yeah, the less fortunate not everybody has many.
So that's why I recommend supporters that we should be doing anything we can for our children uh and we have the love to give back more to our community um things that we do also not have received and and getting money for the swimming pools and things like that but these are small things that we can do for our community.
I know at one time there was a right there a long time ago and it was taken off that I remember when uh we had that big uh blood in the pool and there was a vehicle that hit that light pole and 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 I said no but I never went back up and that's where uh we uh Mr. Big Wees uh died in uh Fort Worthen used to live there. I know in here it's just that we need to do that.
Because there was one of the building there too that kind of sort of way. Right, do I have a motion to uh go on number sixteen?
I don't know.
Do I have a second?
Did that mean I'm here as her to your question?
Okay, okay uh we have a motion to go on a section for the installation of the post I have a I have a motion do I have a second? I mean we have a motion to uh clear out the picture at nine o'clock so nine thirty to one. Do I have a second? Motion back. So we uh see do I have a vote? I have a vote.
Sure. I would say it's your uh course they yes and the other house was saved on uh but we're having thank you very much.
Sandy, I never got to speak either. I had to raise my hand.
Sorry.
I would just like to say that I know Cora last week it said that there's a light over all down the whole street we weren't talking about the whole street I know there's light we were talking about that creek there's a difference. And not everybody's fortunate enough to have a heart or to take this gift to school that's their way of getting to school. And I mean I'm sure she had to put her light she could have come to the city council and done the same thing if she put it on her house that's on her. Now this the light that they were gonna put there it's not gonna lead to our house we have light because my neighbor has a pole there with a light and if my house is lit we're not talking about my house if that's what she's thinking we're talking about the creek.
We we have a you can uh the the people was cleaning out the city purpose all that property and since they cleaned it out the the other things that that there was that side of the the city and when they come to school to the classroom they come to the restroom and they use it as a walkway and and except that you know it's a terrible it's not for you to do it.
It's a shortcut.
There's a shortcut there.
And and I think that back then I mean there are parties who there is a lot of people who did.
It's not technical the way they run the creek but that's just the way.
I don't hear anything but I um mentioned the lights up the street just didn't have anything to cover it's that next whole street is lit and the light gets up from here and from up here the bridge is invisible so there's no way to see it. So when I saw it you saw the pictures and then I'm not busy I have a nice house of pictures and I don't see what you're hoping to make you see with all this nothing you were talking about. I I have this age or my creed is wrong. It's a great there was a this experience I said the fridge is like I'm talking about I'm talking about the second I'm talking about the second it's very dark there because you cannot see the bridges if you have an accident here and it can't happen uh you can't see that you cannot see on the whole street the creek itself uh who can you can't see it can't on this tree is fairly so those are the.
And that's okay I mean she worried about the two thousand dollars she should be worried about banking she what part of being taken out of there than the two thousand dollars.
All right, then move on to uh the motion back on uh sixteen again Andy. Concerned in discussion consideration of installation of additional lighting on vehicles through the street and the miss on the state John Street as recommended by City Administrator uh this has had a neutralized the coast the coast are already there uh the city will incur a small charge about the lighting not in time stream but those uh who's in writing the creek is wrong. Any discussion?
Do you vote for the vote?
Any motion to vote? Do I have a second? Number seventeen does not pass. I think.